All right, good morning. Good morning. I'll go ahead and call to order a meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners and ask our illustrious clerk to take the role.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Green.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Hildenbrand.
Here.
Ponstein. Burl.
Here.
Coleman. Breavy.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Sparks.
Present.
McLeod.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Oliver King. Legrand.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Wooden. Pakla.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Boujack.
Present.
Chair Stack.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen members present, one, uh, four absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I will now call on Commissioner Baker for the invocation.
Hello, thank you. I spent a lot of time pondering what to do today, but I decided I'm going to ask you all to recite with me the Lord's Prayer in a few moments. First, this prayer, um, for those that know me might be surprised, but this was very meaningful to me as I was in college trying to figure out what my calling was. In the school I went to, we had callings and not careers or majors, but, um, but the, I was in a theology class, and even though I'd grown up learning the words of this prayer, as most, as probably many of you have, I learned it and wrote and probably didn't really think a lot about the, the words. But this theology professor in college, and again, it's good to know that some people remember what they learned in college decades later, but, um, the, uh, the, the college professor talked about what the prayer and God also asks of us, not just of what we ask of God. And so there's some words that I'd like to emphasize as we go through, "Our Father," so "our" meaning really all of us, "what the will be done on earth, um, not just in heaven, and also as we forgive those." And, and this prayer is also used in many recovery programs, AA, as a, as a prayer of unity and also a call of action. So if you would, uh, think about that, those ways of thinking about this prayer as we go through it, if you'd like to join. "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Stop trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever." Amen. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a note for my colleagues, the agenda is slightly shifted from a, perhaps our more traditional, uh, means of scheduling items five through twelve, but you'll note in the standing rule 3.1, uh, the order for five through twelve is at the discretion of the chair. So we shifted it around a bit here, in part because, uh, the special order of business is, is generally not what the public comes to hear. It's important for us to hear it, but, uh, the thought would be, let's, uh, let's do our action items, which are the items that the public generally comes to see us attend to, uh, and then we'll take up the, um, the special order of business. And my thought is, let's try that for a bit, see how that goes, and then we'll reassess. So with that, uh, item five, we'll now move to public comment. This is the first opportunity for the public to address this if they wish to do so. This is for matters that are on the agenda only, action items. If you do wish to address an action item at this point, please identify yourself by name, please identify the action item you would like to address, and you have up to three minutes.
Hello, good morning, everyone. Uh, I'm here to, um, first off, my name is Danielle Castillo. I am the court administrator and magistrate over at sixty-third District Court, and I see some familiar faces and also some new faces. So hello, it's nice to meet everyone. I am here because, under our consent agenda today, Resolution 07202374, to introduce to everyone our new appointed magistrate, Alex Grimes. Alex worked, uh, at the Kent County Prosecutor's Office for over ten years before coming out to sixty-third to be our magistrate. He, uh, was hired and started here, uh, at sixty-third with me in April of this year. Uh, he is born and raised in Caledonia, lives there currently. Um, so, uh, myself, I was born and raised in Byron Center, so we have a little bit of competition here. So we're excited that, uh, to have Alex join our team and to see all of your faces again, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on an agenda in Moline?
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Commissioners. Daniel Scott. Of Kent County for many years. It's again my more important identity, as I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. First of all, I wanted to publicly thank Commissioner DeBoer and whoever assisted her in getting this assistance to, uh, Leslie King of Sacred Beginnings, the one in our city who is rescuing more women and children in sex slavery than anyone else. Thank you, Chairman, uh, Commissioner. I would petition you for, to send even more money that way, as this terrible sin continues to grow in our country. I would hope that all of you commissioners would be alert of all the children coming over the border that are being forced into sex slavery and employment slavery. I'm sure we're going to see it here in Kent County, and of course, that would, uh, be terrible to have that in our presence. I understand you're talking a lot about the, uh, budget, and I would like to address, first of all, uh, letter B. And, uh, the assistance for the homeless. Again, I've been a minister in Hartside neighborhood for almost forty-three years. Worst neighborhood in our city, maybe in our whole county, and I see those without homes almost every day. Some of them, it's beyond their control, but many, and again, over forty-three years, many, it's a lifestyle choice. Addictions of different kinds, and some just choose to live without what we'd call a home. I see where you're possibly, or maybe already decided to assist them with over a million and a half dollars. My recommendation would be to follow the scriptures, holy scriptures, which say, "If you don't work, you don't eat." That's not a cruel recommendation by the almighty Lord God. It just makes sense. And I realize some of these people can't work. Again, I see them every day for almost forty-three years. But many can. Many can, and they're, again, without a home because they're wasting their money on alcohol and now drugs that are so prevalent in our city. In fact, now there's cannabis everywhere, weed stores, and you're going to see more and more homeless because of this, and of course, other ills in our society. So my appeal would be to be wise in who you help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, agenda, action items only. All right, I see none, so we'll now move to the next item, six, consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Baker. Moved, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Breavy. Discussion? If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein. Burl.
Yes.
Coleman. Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King. Legrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden. Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes, the consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item seven, our resolution, starting with Resolution 7A, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 67 of today's date for the General Art Ford International Airport Authority Revenue Bonds Series 2022 Resolution Amendment for the General Art Ford International Airport.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion? Supported by, um, Commissioner Burl? Discussion, comments? I see none. This is a voice vote. All that support that motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. Item seven B, I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 68 of today's date, continuing of care program, shelter plus care contracts and budget appropriation be approved, brought to us by the Kent County Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion? Supported by Commissioner Diaz. Comments or questions? I see none. This is a roll call, so Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 68, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor. Merchant. DeBoer. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein. Burl.
Yes.
Coleman. Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays and zero nays. The motion passes, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item seven C, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King again.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 69, Two Rivers Green Space Land Acquisition, be, uh, uh, I'm sorry, of today's date, Two Rivers Green Space Land Acquisition, brought to us by the Parks Department, be accepted and approved.
Thank you. It was supported by Commissioner.
Lally.
Boujack. Thank you. Questions or comments on this motion? Commissioner Boujack.
I'd like to comment, oh, thank you, Chair. I'd like to comment on this particular, um, item. This particular park is located in Caledonian Township, District 21. As a township trustee and planning commissioner in Caledonia, worked very, very hard on their parks plan, which included this park, Two Rivers, um, the Thorn Apple Bend, and also Leopard Park. So Kent County has invested quite a bit of, um, energy, time, and money in this particular, um, Parks Department effort to acquire land for future use for people. And this particular one is a very, very amazing piece of property. It, um, is the confluences of the Cold Water River and the Thorn Apple River. So to be able to purchase a piece of land that's located right at the confluences was critical, it was the last critical piece that needed to be purchased to complete that park plan. So, um, kudos to the Caledonian Township Board of Trustees for investing one hundred fifty thousand dollars towards this project, partnering with the county, and, uh, very glad to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Having said that, will this be the last, will this be the last piece regarding that area and that park? Because sometimes I've noticed buying one piece leads to buying another piece and trying to stay contiguous, and they can get away from us, we have to have some borders at some point, or...
Yeah, thank you.
Ben Swayze, if you would respond to that for us, please.
Yep. So, uh, it's certainly the most important piece, uh, so it's the last piece in the area that's on the river. Um, it has about fifteen hundred, uh, feet of frontage on the river, so it's certainly the most, the most important piece. Um, there are some other pieces of undeveloped property in that area. Um, as those come up, we'll probably have those discussions about whether it makes sense or not, uh, for us to add that to the park, but from my perspective, um, you know, getting this piece will now lead to the next step, which is figuring out, how do we get, uh, members of the public into the park to make sure they can enjoy it?
Make sure that we're, we're justifying this by good use. We always got to track that and make sure that we're getting a good return on our investment, I think.
Absolutely.
For sure. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering, is this park county maintained, or is it maintained by the township?
You almost got to your seat.
Yes, this is a county park, so, uh, there have been a lot of funders in this. Uh, as Commissioner Boujack mentioned, uh, Caledonia Township has been a great partner in this, uh, but their partnership up to this point has been funding, uh, and this is a town, uh, this is a county maintained park.
All right, any other, yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
To see you before us, perhaps you could introduce yourself as our new Parks Director.
Absolutely, thank you. Uh, so my name is Ben Swayze. I am the new Parks Director. I'm about eight weeks into my, uh, term now. It's been a, a whirlwind, but, uh, I've been spending a lot of time in the parks, uh, getting to know the land and getting to know our staff that maintains it, and as you guys know, we have a lot of, uh, projects coming up that we've been working on, so I've kind of hit the ground running, but, uh, I appreciate the welcome the county has given to me so far, and it's, uh, it's been a great eight weeks.
I suspect we'll be seeing quite a bit of you. All right, anything else? If not, this, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sparks.
Are you related to Patrick?
So I will say that I get that quite often, um, and the answer is, I have a brother whose name is actually Patrick Swayze.
So the answer is yes. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 69, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein. Burl.
Yes.
Coleman. Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 69er is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item seven D, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move, uh, Resolution 7D of today's date, the PNC Foundation Grant to support the Kent County Welcome Plan at the Administrator's Office. Thank you.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions or comments? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support the motion say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose say no. Motion passes. Item seven E, I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 71 of today's date to request, uh, a request to allocate funds to DGRI for Art Prize 2023.
Is there support for that motion?
Comes to us from the Administrator's Office.
Now is there support for that motion? Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this? Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I just had some questions because there was not, um, the, um, the document that kind of shows where all of this is coming from, and I've been out, so I apologize for not having a full context, but, um, so I, I, I thought that this funding to support Art Prize was already part of the lodging and excise tax, um, collections, is it not? So are we doing something, we have to do something special to allocate these funds, even though we're already collecting it, and we are supposed to be supporting all of these sorts of, um, uh, things from that fund? So I'm just trying to understand, is this an addition to, or is this something specifically special because it's Art Prize?
Probably yes, both, but I'll let Commissioner Al Vanderburgh answer.
Yes. Did I get a promotion just now?
Did I say Commissioner? I didn't say Chair, though, at least, so...
Yeah. Uh, so yes, this is special just for Art Prize. Uh, out of the excise tax, we currently, I think we fund twelve thousand or so for festival, uh, and there's a list of other things, uh, but in this case, uh, it was the transition of Art Prize from 1.0 to 2.0, and a number of community partners coming together. So the, the, it's actually, the leaders of Art Prize are now, uh, Ferris Kendall in the City of Grand Rapids and also DGRI. And so, uh, all those entities and many others were asked for contributions to fund Art Prize 2.0. And what really makes us stand aside, apart from anything else, is that it's the largest art, outdoor art festival in the United States, and creates about fourteen million in economic impact, uh, in our region. And, uh, so, uh, we'd, we would be in for seventy-five thousand if the board approves this, and, uh, City of Grand Rapids, and Experience Grand Rapids, and the usual list of suspects, I think, all contributed, uh, funds to this effort.
All right, other questions or comments? Commissioner Hennessy.
Is this going to be a one-time only? Is there, is there a plan for this, or for the new Art Prize to become more sustainable?
It, I did also request seventy-five thousand in the upcoming budget, and so I think we'll play it by ear. I, the intent, I think, is that it would be recurring, but I think we all need to see how Art Prize 2.0 performs, and, uh, and have those conversations as it goes.
But we traditionally provided, I think it's ten thousand a year to the, to the June Festival of the Arts, and, you know, this is significantly more, the impact goes beyond Kent County more, more so than, than the June event. But, you know, but I still think that there's a value in trying to look at, is there any plan for it to become more sustainable? Maybe not completely, but more so.
I can ask that question at the DGRI Board Meeting.
Mr. Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Al, is there any way we can kind of drill down further on economic impact? I, I often will hear numbers being thrown out of millions of dollars of impact in West Michigan. I don't know how we get to those numbers sometimes, and I've actually looked at events and corresponding revenues that they're thought to be brought in. I can't square that in my mind, because, you know, being an event coordinator, I, I think sometimes those numbers are inflated, and I'd really like to know the process, I guess, and I think it's important for all of us to know that process, so we can, uh, kind of dig in a little bit and see if those numbers are... I'm not questioning you, I'm just wondering about how we come up with that.
Absolutely. I have a memo from the city that shows the impact work that was done, and it's a couple pages, uh, but I'll share that with the whole board. It might have been on that committee, I don't know if it was on the committee, uh, action request or not, but we'll get that out to you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Merchant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, due to a conflict with a family business, I just wanted to note that I'll be abstaining from the vote on Resolution 71.
For the record, that request did come to us before this meeting and was reviewed with counsel, and we accept the request of abstain. Anyone else? If not, this is a voice vote. Those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. With one abstention, excuse me, from, uh, Commissioner Merchant. All right, we'll move to item seven F, and I will call on Commissioner TBD, also known as Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move, uh, Resolution 72 of today's date, Amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Grand Valley Metro Council to remove the city of Hastings. Um, I guess this comes to us from ourselves, the Board of Commissioners.
Uh, is there support for that motion? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions or comments on this? Bit of an unusual motion, but Commissioner McLeod.
A lot of questions today, Chair, so, um, I, I guess I could apologize, but, you know, I, I won't.
Don't apologize.
So, I'm just wondering, um, so there wasn't, um, the, the detailed action request on this one that provided any detail in terms of kind of what, how this came about and why? Is that something that could be provided to us at some point, especially for those of us that are not part of the council?
Yes.
And have that...
Yeah, I think that Administrator Al Vanderburgh can give you a brief response at this point.
Yeah, it, so, the Metro Council has over forty members, and under the state law that created it, if a member is added or if a member is removed, it requires not only a vote of the Metro Council, but a vote of every member of the Metro Council. And many times over the years, people have said, "This is not efficient. This is ridiculous. We should get this changed." I've been told it would cha, require a change in state law, and I don't think anybody has thought they wanted to expend that much effort for something like this, so it's really more ministerial. Uh, I'm not aware that Hastings gave reasons for why they withdrew, but I do know that, uh, the core members of the Metro Council are the ones that are in the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. All money that, uh, all projects and state or federal funding for projects within that planning area has to go through the planning process of the MPO overseas. Big part, the biggest part of the Metro Council. There's also the Regis Agency, that's the regional GIS, uh, and then also Elgro, the Lower Grand Watershed is a, the other huge component of what the Metro Council does. They also have taken a lead in the state on the whole, uh, asset management of, uh, the, the infrastructure we see and this infrastructure we don't see under the ground. I do know that Hastings, obviously, isn't in Kent County, also is not in the MPO, was not a member of Regis nor the Lower Grand Watershed, so they really, at some point, you might even ask, "Where is the benefit?" Well, they saw the benefit, so they were a member, and then they withdrew. So I, I mean, it's really their prerogative, and if they don't give a reason, that's the best we know.
Or to summarize, I think they are requesting to be removed as opposed to being forced out.
That makes sense. And just a quick follow-up, so does this happen very often? Do members, is this, I, I haven't seen this come before us before, and so I just wondered how frequent something like this, this type of change occurs?
I would say every three to four, somewhere every five years, in that range, three, four, five years it happens. Uh, I remember, uh, James Town pulled out after they had a change in their township board, and then they wanted back in, when they realized they weren't going to be getting any money for transportation proj, I mean, so we do have some of that, those political changes that can cause membership changes, uh, and some ultimately just, uh, again, uh, to really benefit from the membership, I think you need to participate in those other things, uh, so...
Other questions or comments? I see none. This is a voice vote. Those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. Thank you. For item seven G, I will also call on Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to propose to move Resolution 73 of today's date. This is an appointment to the Community Mental Health Authority Board to Network 180. We don't, well, the name is there later on, but this also comes to us, we proved it at LHR, so it comes from the Board of Commissioners.
It was supported by Commissioner Boujack. Thank you. Questions or comments? Jared Spear is the one being nominated. Yes, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. As I know, I've known Jared for about 14 years now, and he is an absolutely outstanding man. Comes from a great family, great background, extremely measured, real smart, and you could not have picked a better person to serve on this mental health board. He's just a really good dude, so I just wanted to say thank you to whoever interviewed him and appointed him. You can't go wrong with Jared Spear. Thank you.
I believe that was Commissioner Boujack, Commissioner DeBoer, and Commissioner Baker, all who sung his praises after that interview, so. All right, other questions or comments? If not, this is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. That is the last of our resolutions for the day, so we will now move to our Special Order of Business. Mr. Paul Matts will be here with the annual financial report.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. So I'm here to introduce Paul Matts from Raymond Robson, and he's going to go through page by page of this report, so lean back. No, I'm kidding. So he'll go over the highlights. I'm very pleased to have him here, and we had another successful audit, so.
I didn't move it later in the agenda, so you have until noon. That was not the purpose for the.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning to share the results of the audit for the year ended December 31 of 2022. Again, my name is Paul Matts with Raymond Robson. If you've been on the board in the past, you may be accustomed to seeing a colleague of mine, Stephen Bland, who has completed this presentation for you. Stephen actually took on a very different role within our firm. He has moved up to be the COO of the firm, and so then I had the opportunity to step in within his role as the firm's Director of Public Sector Quality Management, and then also certainly the opportunity to oversee the audit of Kent County for the year, and it was my pleasure to do so. I do want to take just a moment to thank management, staff that we worked with as part of the audit. It is not a small undertaking to go through this process. I think the financial statements are 253 pages this year. It seems like they grow a few pages every year. We received tremendous support and cooperation through the audit process in many ways. Kent is sort of the gold standard within the financial reporting that we see as a firm, so just kudos to the group, and our thanks to everybody that we worked with as part of the audit this year. Our goal, our responsibility as part of the audit, is ultimately to issue an opinion as to whether we believe the financial statements are accurately stated in all material respects. There's a lot that goes, that goes into doing that. We spend a lot of time looking at the numbers. We also look at the system of internal controls, the who's doing what, are there reviews, approvals taking place, segregation of duties, and that will all culminate into the audit reporting that you may have in front of you. We also have to do additional compliance testing over the federal funding that the county receives. And this year, actually, we had to do testing of eight of those federally funded programs. That's a significant number. There have been years we've only had to do one or two, and so again, a lot of work was involved, and again, tremendous support from the county staff. Sort of the highlight of the audit that I wanted to be sure to share with you is that we issued the unmodified, clean audit opinion on the financial statements, so that, yes, we do believe that those are accurately stated financial statements, useful then for the board as part of your decision-making processes. Regarding audit findings, if we do identify matters that we feel should be reported to this group, those would be included as part of the audit documentation as well. Again, I'm very pleased to note there were no material items that we noted as far as audit findings go, either with the financial statements or with the additional compliance testing that we do over those federally funded programs. We did identify two items that we consider to be immaterial non-compliance within two HUD programs. HUD is a little bit picky in particular on some of the items that they look for as far as compliance testing goes, so again, those are minor, certainly in the grand scheme of things, but I did just want to mention that there were two immaterial items that we noted as part of that compliance testing. Within the financial statement document, there's just a couple of pages that I wanted to be sure to mention to you, to reference. Starting on page nine, there's a document called a transmittal letter. It's only about five, six pages, but what I like to point out here, it goes beyond the numbers a little bit. It talks a little bit about some of the accomplishments during the year, some of the awards received. So I just think it's helpful to sort of reflect upon, you know, what we did accomplish within, for the use of the funds during the year. On page 19, there's three pages that are the independent auditors' report, and these are the pages where, again, we've issued that clean, unmodified audit opinion. And that is the highest opinion, the best opinion you can get as part of the audit process. And then on page 24, there's a section starting there called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. You've got just a handful of pages, again, here that summarize the financial results for the year. There's comparative information to 2021 as well. There are some charts, some graphs, so sometimes the information can be a little bit easier to digest in that more summarized format. There's some really good narrative on budget to actual results. So again, just a section that, you know, if you don't want to dig into the whole 253 pages with your family at dinnertime, might be just a good use of a few minutes to review that Management's Discussion and Analysis. I did want to touch on just a couple of numbers within the general fund. There was a total increase in fund balance for the year of the general fund of $2,222,801, bringing the end-of-the-year fund balance to about 86.9 million at December 31st. That ending fund balance as a percentage of your total expenditures and transfers out within the general fund was about 43.7%, and that is consistent with the fund balance policy that the county has adopted. And do keep in mind, you know, that sounds like a large fund balance, but certainly that needs to hold you for several months until property taxes and other revenues start to come in here during 2023. There is, of course, a lot of information here. As mentioned, I could give you the version that kept us here till lunch, but I just wanted to touch on those highlights, and then if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer, or an area you might like me to touch on in more detail, again, I would be most happy to do so.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate your report. How are you able to process, you know, the last couple of years have been pretty crazy with the COVID and all the, I call it monopoly money that was coming and going, and sometimes we didn't know how we were supposed to use it, where it's going to end up. How do you get through that, and with any type of confidence that it was done the right way, I guess, and?
So a lot of it is, is, is looking at the systems that are in place, you know, the who's doing what. You know, of course, our reporting is on, you know, the accurate reporting of the numbers, more so on, you know, you know, the return on investment, or what you will. So a lot of it is spent looking at the who's doing what, the programs, the processes that are in place. I will tell you that, you know, I mentioned we did eight federally funded programs we audited this year. Part of the reason we've had to do so many is because COVID-funded programs are considered higher risk, so we are more likely to select those. So several of the ones that we did test were COVID-funded, so we do have a lot of confidence looking at those programs, because we dug in to a lot of detail within those COVID-funded programs, looking at the processes, looking at the reporting, making sure that the underlying accounting records supported the reporting, the request for cash. All of those sorts of things went into the process. So it's not, it's not a small undertaking, but I will tell you that the staff and the management that we worked with seem to have their, their hands on things very comfortably.
I'm sure, and I'm sure you've done a good job. Given that it was a moving target, did you learn anything along the way that could be helpful for next time we have to go through something like this in, in that process, I guess?
I mean, expecting the unexpected, and, and I will, I will agree with you, you know, it sort of seemed like the funding was provided, and then they said, you know, months later, well, here are the rules you have to follow for the money that we gave you several, several months previously. So it was a little bit of a moving target. I think we've learned to be nimble. I think we've learned to just really focus on what we know, what is, what is allowed, what is not allowed, and then just try to be flexible, you know, as the rules got adjusted, you know, let's change our plan of approach going forward. Hopefully, we don't have something similar to deal with in the future, but I think it really was just learning to be nimble with the treatment of those types of funds.
Thank you for your report.
All right, Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Like to congratulate the past Commissioners on a successful 2022 budget, and looking forward to getting a report like this again next year, when we find out what we did as Commissioners in 2023. In the succession of reports that you have done, is this a continuum of positive results coming from Kent County? And if so, how many years running have we had a positive report like this?
Sure, so I, I don't have all the history, just with it being my first year of overseeing the audit, but I know from speaking with, with my colleagues, speaking with Stephen, speaking with the senior manager who continued on it, the audit itself is always one of the team's highlights of the year, just as far as it's a very well-run organization. You know, staff is very knowledgeable. There are some years we have had other types of findings. We have had some material findings in some years. It's usually because of an unusual situation or something unique that came up, but I will say, you know, from, from the day-to-day, from the normal processes, this is a continuation of a very positive, very well-run organization from our perspective.
Thank you. And I guess, when I look at being a Commissioner at this particular point in time, I feel blessed knowing that the county is in such good financial state. I don't know what it would be like to be a Commissioner in a recession, where you're, you know, having to look at cutting back programs, laying off employees, and do those things. You know, right now, we're looking at adding, I don't know how many, full-time equivalents, but it seems like, you know, the county is very robust at this time, and we're well-financed. And I think Kent County, looking at whether it's the Sheriff's Department, or the Road Commission, or the Parks, or the Department of Public Works, you know, we are the gold standard. I think you use that word, gold standard. And being a Commissioner at this time, this makes it very easy for us to, you know, take on the business of the county, knowing that, you know, we have very, very good financial support and decision-makers, and a great administrator who's helping us, you know, make these decisions. So it's a good time to be in Kent County, and, and looking forward and seeing the growth that we're projecting in Kent County. I don't anticipate that anything, save for another pandemic or recession, will change the course that we're on, which is very positive.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Hennessy.
I'm just, I, I'm not finding it, but where, is the, the, the report on the seven units that were audited separately for the receipt of federal funds, is that a part of this? I didn't know where to find it. It's sort of a point of information question.
For which entities in particular?
The ones you talked about that were separately audited because of the receipt of federal funds.
So on?
I just didn't know where to find it.
Sure. So it's not in, the largest of the reports is called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. There's another report called Single Audit Act Compliance. It's a smaller report. On page 17 of that document, and I'll just list them real quickly, so there was the WIC program, the CDBG program, Home Investment Partnership, Continuum of Care, Emergency Rental Assistance, the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, Child Support Enforcement, and Disaster Grants for Public Assistance. Those were the eight programs.
Were you asking to see the audit reports on those?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're not, those are not separate audit documents. Those are audited as part of the Kent County audit. It's just a, it's a separate compliance audit and a separate compliance report that encompasses all of them. They're not individually separately issued reports.
So is there a separate report?
It's the one that's titled, again, it's not a financial report, it's a compliance report called the Single Audit Act Compliance.
You would like to have a copy of it?
I would love to have a copy of it. I mean, there was a reference to two immaterial findings. I was just curious as to, you know, the nature of the two, you know, if they were not of material findings, but there was something that was found, and I just wanted a reference, you know, to see what this was.
So I'm sure we can get that to you, but I don't know if you can address the two.
Yeah, we can email out the single audit report, sure.
Are you asking to address the immaterial finding?
I would, because, you know, it was referenced today, and I don't see it in here.
Can you do that now, or?
I'd have to have my computer, sorry.
Thank you for your honesty.
We'll get it out this afternoon, though.
Okay.
Response to your question, we did receive on page 16 a GFWA Certificate of Achievements and Excellent Financial Reporting, I think for 22 years in a row or so, so, so they do a comprehensive review of our report, so we know it's checked and double-checked, so.
All right, anyone else for a first time? If not, Commissioner Antor, you.
Thank you, Chair. Along those lines, with Carol's question, I would kind of like to look at the CDBG compliance measures, I guess, if, if we could kind of extract that out. I'd like to drill down on that a little bit if possible. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, thank you, Paul, for your report this morning, and Jeff, you and your staff, obviously, for all the great work and giving us another great audit.
I'd like to thank Raymond and my staff, Chair, our county manager and our staff did a great job, and we worked really well with our, with our team here, so.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the next item, which is Administrator Report.
Yes, we.
No, not you. Public, public comment. I'm sorry. The next item is the public comment, second opportunity of anyone from the public who should address us on matters within our general jurisdiction. You may do so at this time. Please identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes to address the board.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. I prefer Dee Jones. I'd like to show you my award I got. Didn't show the actual board, I only showed Executive Committee. Ah, you Republican, huh? Had to say that. This is what I got from the Internet Conference 2.0. It's funny y'all said Art Prize 2.0. It's funny how the universe works, but this is what I got for my esports competition and my award that I won in Las Vegas. Thank you, everybody who clapped for me. All of you guys know how hard I worked, all of the passion, all of the love, the passion I have for the state, this county, my city, the youth, everyone, regardless of party. I did this to put the city on, as they would say, and I did, and I connected with a lot of powerful people. I even got to talk to people in the NBA, and like, even like the guy from the New York Knicks who scouts and looked at all of the talent, and people that does talent development from a lot of different organizations knows that I won this award. So I'm looking forward to continuously doing work in Kent County and just being myself, just being Dee Jones. I never pretended. I told you guys that I would show up every single time that I could, and I was just busy, so I didn't get to talk to you guys and apologize for snapping and speaking without having all of the general context information when I spoke passionately, but I just expect a lot from Kent County. I expect regardless of political party that you guys do what's best for the community, because I don't think that you guys would have run for political office if you guys were, had your own self-interest. And I've seen that a little bit, of that it's showing that self-interest, but I think that you guys can do better. I think that there can be better bipartisan legislation and work. I'm an international visionary, and everybody sees that. You guys see how hard I work. I came and spoke to you guys, I was myself. I put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into my work. I even want a global business to work, but they want $10,000 to go chill with royal families on a five-day cruise. I don't got that right now. I'm gonna be honest with y'all. But I'll take this. And I know one day I'll be a billionaire. One day I'll probably end up front of your campaign, if I like your campaign, regardless of political party, as long as it aligns with my values, and I know that you're going to do that. And I'm not going to ask for anything, but you just be yourself and you hold yourself to what you ran your political campaign on. And so I know I'm gonna be a billionaire, I'm a visionary, I'm going to continuously do cool things. I even got esports. I'm the person that brought esports to Grand Rapids Public Schools, and now they have three esports teams, and they're going to expand that next year. So I influenced the education system without political power, without power, with just my continuous advocacy of just showing up, and I know that showing up is a powerful thing. I know that advocacy actually works. So you guys see my work, everybody has seen my work. I've never pretended a day in my life to be something that I wasn't, and you guys see that. So I just want to thank everybody that poured into what I was doing, and I want to thank the Kent County Sheriff's Department for being a part of my esports competition.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Chairman, Commissioners. I have great news from 320 East Fulton. Since last year and a half, through one ministry, Brother Jordan Sweezers, just talked to him last night, 76 precious babies have been saved from being murdered there in the last year and a half. Praise God. Praise God. Bad news, just this year, first six months, 556 have been murdered. Told you about the murder pill. Again, what it does, it cuts off nutrition to the child in. Again, what it does, it cuts off nutrition to the child in the womb, starves to death. Baby is discharged in the toilet, along with the medicine, and that is spoiling our water. Let's prove it. Some more good news. There is a pill that can be taken by the woman. If taken within three days, it will reverse the intense intention to murder the child, but it must be taken in three days. Again, the scripture says, "This act does the Lord hate. This act is abomination unto him; hands that shed innocent blood." I'd like to read three quotes to you. Quote, "We don't want the word to get out that we want to exterminate the Negro population." Quote number two, "They are human weeds, reckless breeders, spawning human beings who never should have been born." Quote three, "I accepted an invitation to talk to the women's branch of the Ku Klux Three quotes from Margaret Sanger, founder of Planned Parenthood. You support Planned Parenthood, you support, support this kind of racism. She was a good friend of Adolf Hitler. How much do we hear about Nazism? She actually met with him twice, spoke at her, their meetings. This is what it does. That's what she supports, hoping to annihilate, as she said, the Negro population. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, we'll then move to item number 10 now. Commissioner Vanderburg. Yeah, I doubt it. I thought you enjoyed it the first time.
All right, all right. Just a couple of quick things. I just wanted to say that you will shortly be getting the promised report on where we stand with ARPA. Commissioner Green and I were commenting at the Fairgrounds grand opening how good it is to see physical things happening with the ARPA money. And I don't know if anyone had a chance to go to the Lowell Senior Center opening last night. We didn't get the invitation until the day before, so that's why you didn't get timely notice either. So I was not able to attend. I'm trying to make all those. So, but it's, everything's going very well, I think, with the, with the ARPA, getting all the reports in on time and all that sort of thing, so. And then, of course, upcoming, we have the Wyoming, the event in Wyoming. The board had allocated $6 million for that project, so that is upcoming as well. It's a busy summer, as you know, with all the projects, Sustainable Business Park meetings, and we have an upcoming meeting next week, or actually, August 1, to talk, one more work session on the county space need study and recommendations. We did, I think, last week, get you answers to Commissioner questions, so we would really appreciate it if you could get any remaining questions to us. So we have time to do some research before that work session, if you do have those questions. And I think that's it for today. Yeah?
All right, thank you. Next item is reports. Does any Commissioner have a report? Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to report on behalf of myself and Commissioner Teal that we had our arduous process, a week and a half long for the early childhood village review. We had $12 million in ask, but only $8 million to give. So very interesting proposals this time around, very different from what we had before. We hope to impact the lives of children zero to five, as well as their parents, in a meaningful way here in Kent County. And we look forward to sharing the results with all of you, as well as what we came up with, and hope that you will agree that we made a good decision. And hopefully, we could, you know, do this again because the village is about to come back up, and we're going to be asking for your support and showing you many, many, many good things that have happened because of your support and because of the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? If not, we'll move to miscellaneous. Any Commissioner have a miscellaneous item? Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick things. I'd like to thank State Representative Fitzgerald and Senate Majority Leader Brink for providing $5 million for Godfrey Public Schools for their roof. Thankfully, it, it looks like they are on track to finish that construction by the time that the school year starts this September. I've mentioned before, but just a quick recap, the section of the roof at Godfrey High School collapsed the summer before the pandemic started, and they are just now coming to the point where they're ready to, to finish up that construction. And so I'm very, very grateful for that. We also got an email from the Administrator Al yesterday about strategic planning, and he mentioned in there that all of the commissioners have not finished their ranking yet. And so I'd like to ask all of you who have not finished to please do so, so that we can move forward with that strategic planning process. And finally, I was invited to Phase Two of the Four Star Theater kickoff, which will be happening on Wednesday, July 26th, from 12:30 to 1:30 at 1944 Division Avenue. And I wanted to invite all of you who are able to attend to, to please do so. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
I appreciate the staff and Administrator's Office trying to give us information on these projects, like the opening of the Lowell Center for Senior Neighbors. It's, you know, even if it's last minute, it's really appreciated because it's really good for us to be able to see, and for the community, to be able to see, you know, where this ARPA money is going and how it will be used. I did happen to attend that event, yes, and it was really well-attended. The previous Lowell Center only had like a census, daily census of about 13 people. Well, there were easily 100 people, you know, there at the hot dog dinner when I, when I arrived. And so it's, it's obviously a program that's going to grow. It's a very nice facility. And then they will have the Walker Center later opening. But, you know, it is, it's just good to know, and I appreciate the notice. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? I think Commissioner Antor.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just want to acknowledge the passing of my Uncle Norbert Nub Antor. He was a 99, he just turned 99 years old a few weeks ago, and probably the greatest human being I've ever met in my life. He was, comes from that greatest generation. And he was injured really badly in a fierce battle in Italy in World War II. And he came out of there, he was actually on the cover of several magazines as he is recovering. But he was just a great man, and if, you know, that World War II, those veterans, we don't have a lot left. And so if you ever come across one, they are a true treasure. Just thank them for their service because a lot of people don't understand, back then, you enlisted, you know? You just left and you enlisted. That was the mindset. Ted Williams, a lot of great athletes, they just enlisted and gave three years of their life during the prime of their careers. That's the way they, and that's why I consider them the greatest generation. So just if you ever run across one, which I do on occasion, just thank them for their, for their service. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. This is apropos of almost nothing, but as one of the resident history nerds here, last, last week, we celebrated what would have been President Ford's 110th birthday, and I think it's worth noting that the Ford Library and the Presidential Foundation are celebrating the 50th anniversary of him taking office as Vice President. So I encourage people to go. If you haven't, I went back to the Ford Museum for the first time in a couple of years. And if you haven't been there in a few years, they've done a lot of upgrading of the exhibits and stuff. So definitely worth your time and your family's time. So happy belated birthday to Grand Rapids' own President Ford.
Thank you. Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank Commissioner Hennessy for inviting us all to the New Development Corporation celebration of their 25 years with, and the first new construction project, which is in lovely District 16, which I represent. And I'm going to be excited to attend that today. And dealing with the housing crisis in our area just involves efforts big and less big. So the work of this, of this group is really impressive, and anyone who has time to stop by between 4:00 and 6:00, it would be wonderful. I think everyone got an invitation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Not, I have just two items. One, just underscoring something that Administrator Al had mentioned, and that is that we'd have one more work session on facilities, the space need issues. So please, if you do have questions, if you do have issues, it will be helpful if you can get those to us beforehand so we can make the best use of that time. So I encourage you to do that. Second is, we do not have any more work sessions scheduled on the Sustainable Business Park issues. If you have questions yet, you have issues, concerns, or you believe that we should do another work session, let us know. We can squeeze another one in if we have to, but we'll, we'll do everything we can. This is a big decision for us, so if you have questions, I want to make sure you have every opportunity to get those questions answered. So with that, I will call on Commissioner Baker.
I'd like to move that we adjourn, subject to call of Chair, until we meet again on August 10th at 8:30.
Anyone support that one? All right. All those papers say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.